Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pecow.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the February 6, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of February 6, 2023.
Second. Questions or comments, call the roll. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Here. Or I, sorry.
Proclamation honoring Leah Lukini's 100th birthday.
So it's my honor today to honor one of our residents who's reached the century mark, which we could all only hope we can do. And as we were discussing earlier, she's no medication, very healthy, and you know, as one of our centenarians used to say, the first hundred years are the hardest. So while you're looking at the pictures, the Village Orleans Park proclamation recognizing the 100th birthday of Leah Lukini, whereas longevity of life is a blessing not only for the individual but also for a community which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, and experiences this individual brings, whereas the Village of Orleans Park recognizes with respect and admiration the contribution of the senior citizens in our community, whereas Leah Lukini was born to Emil and Adele Tonelli on February 15, 1923, in Grignola, Italy, a small hamlet in the mountains of northern Tuscany. She lived there until the age of two, when she and her mother joined her father in the Roseland neighborhood of Chicago. And whereas Leah didn't speak English, but learned very quickly, she proudly attended St. Willibras Grade School and went on to graduate from high school at St. Louis Academy. And whereas Leah met active-duty World War II Navy Seaman August "Gus" Lukini in 1943, and they were married nine months later. By 1954, Leah and Gus were parents to three girls, Adele, Alice, and Anita. Leah was a full-time mother taking on occasional part-time employment. Her main focus was caring for her family, including her parents, who lived within walking distance. And whereas in 1973, Leah and Gus moved into a new home they built in the May Cliff subdivision in Orland Park, where her daughter Adele moved to in the previous year. They have seven grandchildren and five great-grandchildren. And whereas in 1974, Leah and Gus were able to travel back to Italy, where she had not been since she left with her mother when she was two years old. She visited the hamlet she grew up in with many cousins, aunts, and uncles. And whereas in 1994, Gus passed away, she still lives in the home they built in Orland Park. This year will mark 50 years in their home. Leah enjoys knitting, sewing, crocheting, and has taught knitting classes at Knitting, et cetera, when it was located near Mr. Ed's, and also when it relocated to 151st and West Avenue. And by the way, I remember that because I lived on Jefferson about 150 yards from Mr. Ed's. She carried on the tradition of teaching her daughters how to thread a needle and sew, just as her mother did. And whereas Leah's fondest memory is when she met her husband, she keeps her mind engaged, stays active, and is still up for new adventures. Some advice from Leah: Listen to your elders, they have much to contribute. And don't let your newly widowed young mother-in-law move in with you temporarily. And now, therefore I, Keith Pecow, Village President of the Village of Orleans Park, Illinois, and the Counties of Cook and Will do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 15, 2023, as Leah Lukini Day in the Village of Orleans Park.
Thank you, everybody, for...
I know you mean...
Really, I don't...
I don't deserve it.
Sure you do.
A 50-year Orland Park resident to boot.
That's yours.
That's yours? Oh, mine?
That's yours, it's all yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations again. Thanks for joining us here tonight. This is one of the cool parts of the job.
Community Pride Awards, St. Michael's School Varsity Cheerleaders.
Speaking of cool parts of the job, again, one of the good parts of the job. So I'd really like to congratulate the Orland Park St. Michael's School Varsity Cheerleaders that won first place at the ICCA State Cheerleading Championship in Springfield, Illinois, on January 22nd. This is the 19th state title for the St. Michael Cheerleading Program, which puts them on record as the winningest school in the state of Illinois for the sport of competitive cheerleading. So congratulations to all of you. And I recognize how much hard work this is for all of you and how much dedication it takes. Also, I want you to take the time to thank your parents, because I have, at times, been at travel basketball tournaments in faraway places and seen the cheerleading squads going through, and the moms carrying stuff, and the dads looking like, oh, my God, I've got to go to another cheerleading event. And it takes a lot of your parents to get you to all your practices, to be there, to be there at all your events, so make sure you thank them as well. And then also, not to forget the coaches, and I don't see any coaches up here, but there should be. Yeah, well, they should be up here with their team. So, because the coaches are dedicated to make this happen as well. And I know this is not their first time in front of the board, but again, congratulations to all of you. I'm going to come down, but you girls are going to need to squeeze in and kind of go in two rows like we did back there. Wow. 200 cards? Have you read them all? That's what... Have you read them all?
Two per year.
Awesome. And thanks for staying to cheer on all the young girls.
Thank you for coming. Next thing's accounts payable, so... Accounts payable. Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the accounts payable from February 7, 2023, through February 20, 2023, in the amount of $4,551,063.89.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
I have to abstain, I have a business relationship with a vendor.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trust... Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item A, payroll for February 2, 2023 approval. Item B, Village Center Fire Main Improvement Project, ITB 23-10 rejection. Item C, Storch's Nozzle Conversion Program Material Purchase. Item D, Contract for Elevator Maintenance in Village Buildings. Item E, Approval of C22-0057 Generator Transfer Switch and UPS Maintenance. Item F, FLC Gym Dividers Purchase and Installation. Item G, Desktop Computer Replacement Purchase Approval. Item H, ESRI Geographic Information System Software Licensing Renewal. Item I, Kadoka Minolta Multi-Functional Printer Lease. Item J, Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition SCADA Support Services Contract. Item K, Utilities Equipment Goods Purchases and Delivery. Item L, Orland Park Veterans Golf Classic Rifle Raffle License. Item M, An Ordinance Amending Appendixes A and B to Ordinance Number 5774 Ordinance. Item N, 16533, 106 Court, Class 7C Resolution. Item O, Schuster Park Artificial Turf Purchase.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to pull item F to the floor and approve items A through E and approve items G through O.
Second. Call the roll. Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Item F, yep.
Item F.
FLC Gym Dividers Purchase and Installation.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve the use of Sourcewell Contract Number 071819-PTA and award the purchase and installation of one fold-up gym divider and four walk-draw gym dividers to H21 Group of Lombard, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $34,688, and authorize village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second. I have a question on these, because it says here they've reached the end of their useful life. What I want to know is, end of their useful life or end of their usefulness? So, I mean, there's a difference. And we talk about things having a useful life, and then we replace them, and we need to start making sure we're replacing things just when they need to be replaced. So where are we at with these particular dividers?
So these are still utilized for separating the gym, but also some areas where the storage items will be. But these are original to the building when it was purchased back or built back in 1989. And so they've gotten some age to them, some rips, some tears, and it has... It's time to replace them, basically.
So let me ask a second question, which is, we are reconfiguring some of our uses over at FLC. Will this potentially be impacted? In other words, I don't want to have to buy another set of dividers or anything. I want to make sure they're going to still be useful when we reconfigure.
Yes, they'll be used in the new configuration.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
CPAC Three-Meter Platform and Railing Project Reissue, ITB 23005. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve a warning, ITB 23-005, CPAC Three-Meter Platform and Railing Project Reissue to Shafie's Brothers Incorporated, for a total amount not to exceed $162,800, $148,000, plus a 10% contingency of $14,800, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and allow the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second. So this, as I recall, didn't have any bids the last time, and now we only have one, but it's substantially less than what we budgeted and what we estimated for, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct. And it's a company that we utilized before, and they do good work.
Okay. Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Facility Duck Cleaning, Public Works and Police Department Reissue, ITP 23003.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve a warning, ITB 23-003, Facility Duck Cleaning, Public Works and Police Department Reissue, to Hughes Environmental Inc., for a total amount not to exceed $27,300. That's $26,000 plus a 5% contingency of $1,300. And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and allow the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Rec Admin Entry Ramp and ADA Access Improvement Project Reissue, ITB 23004.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to approve a warning, ITB 23-004, Rec Admin Entry Ramp and ADA Access Improvement Project Reissue, including Alternates Number One and Number Two to G Fisher Commercial Construction, for a total contract amount not to exceed $148,050, which is $141,000 plus a 5% contingency of $7,050. And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and allow the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
Just have a question about, I mean, look at the three bids, I mean, it's three times less than the other two, the bid that we took. Do we know this contractor, or are we concerned at all that the other two bids were almost three times as much? We did investigate their references and talked to several other municipalities and places they worked at. We feel confident on that. And it was within the budget estimate, both from an A&amp;E and a separate independent estimator, at this amount versus the other amounts.
Okay.
And so we felt very comfortable with this number being right on target with what the cost would be.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Call the roll. Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
An Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapters 3, 4, and 15 of the Orland Park Municipal Code Regarding Application Fees for Billiard Massage Establishment and Tobacco Licenses. Mr. Mayor.
Chapter 14.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to adopt ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapters 3, 14, and 15 of the Orland Park Municipal Code Regarding Application Fees for Billiard Massage Establishment and Tobacco Licenses Issued by the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
That $75 application fee seems awfully light for the amount of staff work. George?
It coincides with our other application fees, but you're right, a lot of work goes into, you know, processing one of these applications last, not last meeting, maybe the meeting prior to that. We have an applicant who was advised that it was probably, it was unlikely that they would get a license, but they pursued anyway, they really had nothing to lose. So a lot of work still goes into these, so I think it's the board's prerogative if they want to increase that, the application fee.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
At least double of this 75, I would think. 75 is just way too light, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why they all have to be the same. I mean, I think they should be designed based on how much work goes into each one. Something relatively simple and doesn't take as much staff work, I certainly think, you know, raising it to, you know, $100, $150, it doesn't seem unreasonable. Do we have any kind of comparison of what other towns do? I mean, we don't want to run business away either, but if it's that much work to go in and get, you know, the legwork that's necessary.
Yeah, and especially for these specific licenses that we're talking about, these are high, there's a lot of work involved with them, and the other ones, not so much. So I think $150 would be reasonable.
So looking at these billiard massage establishments and tobacco licenses, one, it's one that we're all very reluctant to give without significant checks, and I'm pretty sure we background check all of these folks? We do a check on that? Because I'm not even sure $150 covers our costs, I want to make sure our costs are covered on this.
The background checks would be, that would be separate from this. They would have to pay that separately.
Okay. But we do some investigation, though, right, if they're previously...
Correct. I mean, aside from a background check.
I'm assuming our police department does some checking on these businesses? So, you know, I guess how much time is involved? Because I want to make sure our costs are covered.
Sure. So we could table this and come back with a greater analysis of the amount of time that goes into something like this. We don't have any history with billiard, because no one's really come in, but for massage establishment and tobacco, we can give you an idea.
We don't allow any billiard locations only, I think, so that's why we don't have any of that. But yeah, it doesn't have to be a lot of time. I mean, just, you know, quickly back of the envelope, how much time do we spend on this? And what's our cost on that? Because I think we want to cover our costs, we don't want to be paying for this. And you're right, there's no cost currently, so we just continue to see these things that we deny, 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 deny. It's just a lot of staff time. We've got plenty of things, businesses that we're more likely to approve.
We will, for the next meeting, we'll put it back on with the analysis.
I'll entertain a motion to table.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Compass made the motion. Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
RFP, I'm sorry, Ordinance Amending the Orland Park Village Code With Regards to Supervising Electrician Testing Requirements.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Orland Park Village Code With Regards to Supervising Electrician's Electrical Testing Requirements.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I think this makes sense. We don't need to, you know, obviously the commission, we don't need to have that to administer tests. And since, you know, we're moving to online, I think that makes a lot of sense. We do want to make sure our folks are licensed. Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
RFP Number 22-063, Batting Cage Purchase and Installation Reissue. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Move to approve a warning, RFP Number 22-063, Batting Cage Purchase and Installation Reissue, to National Sports Nets LLC, for the purchase and installation of two batting cages, each at the John Humphrey and Centennial Park, for an amount not to exceed $94,930, to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani. I know we had this on the agenda previously, what were the costs of the ones that we had before? We only had one bidder, I believe, and I believe it was like $140,000 or $150,000?
Yeah, it was substantially more than this, it was above $125,000, $130,000. And last time it was a company that was contracting it out, so it was a textile company, and so we weren't comfortable with that, so we went back out.
Yeah, so this is much more in line with what we would expect, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
Yeah, and I looked up this company too and seen that, because I remember that issue before, and this is right in their wheelhouse. I saw a number of towns around us that they've done work for.
And I think the other thing that we noticed here, and I spoke to George about this, we saw that Sourcewell was, you know, 40% higher than them. And so I think that brings to light, and I spoke to George about this, that, you know, we use Sourcewell a lot, sometimes we use them as a single source, that we should start checking those bids, because they may not always be the lowest bidder out there. And sure, we can use them when it makes sense, but we don't have to use them or trust that they are the low price folks. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Orland Park Village Newsletter Printing Approval.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve a warning, RFP Number 23-002, Publishing of Orland Park Newsletter to One Step Inc., for one year, with an option to extend for two additional years, in the amount not to exceed an annual budgeted amount, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
And I do have a question about this, was this, was this put on our bid site?
Everything goes on our, all our bids.
And these are the only two that submitted?
Correct.
Were there any Orland Park locations that pulled it down? So they're not going to delay this one, but for future printing stuff, can we make sure that some of our local printers get this? Because there's smaller shops that might be able to do this, and we'd like to keep the business in Orland Park, but they may not be regularly checking the village's bid site because it's not a big part of their business. So if we could at least engage the Orland Park printers and send them the bid, make sure they get it? Because if they are competitive, we'd like to keep the business in town.
Will do.
Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Any non-scheduled visitors or visitors? Board comments?
Any non-scheduled visitors or visitors? Nope. Okay. Trustee Compass.
Nice to be back. In my closing, you didn't get me last time, so I have two folks I want to call out from the staff this time around. Two gentlemen. First, Kurt Heinlein, Recreation Division Manager for Sportsplex. Kurt has served the Village of Orland Park for over 21 years. His dependability, pragmatic attitude, and superb management skills keep the Sportsplex operations efficient and successful. Neither long hours, the occasional difficult customer, nor the last-minute scramble to fill an unexpected vacant shift breaks his positivity and willingness to go above and beyond to promote the excellent service that is expected by the myriad of visitors on a daily basis. Kurt never fails to take on tough challenges, and his efforts maintain the Sportsplex as a premier recreational destination within the community. So Kurt, your efforts are recognized and greatly appreciated. And then second, Jason Zarnak, who is our Network Security Analyst for our IT Department. Jason has shown initiative and drive in addition to personal and professional growth during his tenure with the village. As a resource for the IT Department, he demonstrates superior customer service skills and exceptional follow-up when called upon to provide assistance in troubleshooting and solving any issues throughout the organization. His pleasant demeanor, sensibility, and quick thinking can turn any seeming disaster into a tolerable experience. I work at IT, so that says a lot whenever you're dealing with difficult IT customers. difficult IT customers, Jason brings us a game to work every day, and we thank him for all that he does to keep IT running smoothly, so thank you, Jason, and that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Trustee Riordan.
Happy President's Day, and I'm very much looking forward to what Mr. Trustee Healy's going to have to say about all our presidents, he's got like stacks of paper here on, tidbits on every president, no, I'm just teasing, tomorrow is the special rec basketball game where they play against the staff and faculty, it's at OJ, I believe, right, Ray, OJ at seven o'clock.
You playing?
Uh, I am not playing, I'm going to be there though, I'm going to be watching, so.
You, you're not going to play?
I'm not going to play, you're playing, right?
I'm playing, so you should be playing.
That's why I'm not playing.
Trustee Riordan is a good basketball player, so he should play.
I'm going to go watch the mayor and the, and the kids and the participants, and I'm very much looking forward to it.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, well, trustee Riordan should play, so, you know, don't disappoint those kids. Trustee Healy.
Today is President's Day. And it's so good to see.
Okay, trustee Radiszewski.
Happy President's Day.
You've used your time to me, is that right? No, at least we have, we're starting to get some pictures of the presidents in here, but, so, as I was reading the biography of Millard Fillmore the other day, it was, you know, he was a great compromiser and all that, which reminds me that we should compromise here at some point, but, the, the other thing, it's, it's the anniversary of, is 82 years ago today, Butch O'Hare earned the Medal of Honor by shooting down five Japanese aircraft in World War II, and if you ever read the Medal of Honor citation, it's, it's really compelling, his act of courage and bravery and that, and we've ended up for that and other reasons named O'Hare Airport after him, the, but when you see, like, this, our citizen who is 100 years old today, he was 18 at that time, we are losing a lot of those people every day, and it, the community and all that should, you know, just look at what they went through, that, that, those generations of this, and just, just, the other thing about Butch O'Hare, it just makes you respect the veterans so much more for what they have done, which they voluntarily did, and what, to keep us safe, and I'd say get out there and support their veterans and the veterans golf outing, do whatever you can, even buy the, their raffle tickets, so, thank you.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Well, I really didn't want to say.
Well, so, so, what, what the clerk was, what the clerk was explaining to me is that our accountant has a little problem with math. Eighty-two years ago would have been 1941, and February 20th of 1941, we were not yet in the war, as we all know.
Eighty-one years ago.
So it was 81 years, so you better have your staff check your math.
You know what, you know, if you would have listened to that, to that nice lady, she said, respect your elders. I think there's a certain.
Well, do your math right, and then you won't have to worry about it.
Oh, my God.
They didn't have calculators when you, you should be able to do that in your head. Did you need the, the abacus you just pointed out?
Yes, I know, it's, but that was made in China, I think, so.
Trustee Radiszewski.
So, happy birthday to Laia. I'm supposed to say happy birthday to her.
True, that's true.
Um, I, I too want to say happy, you know, President's Day today, it's a day to honor our, our leaders, both past and, and present, and reflect on their many contributions, I also wanted to take a moment to send my prayers and warm regards to former President Jimmy Carter and his family, Jimmy Carter is the oldest president, at 88 years old, and right now he's receiving end-of-life care, so definitely want to send, lots of prayers to him, he was quite the humanitarian, he received the Nobel Peace Prize, he's only one of four presidents who have received that prize, so, he's not exactly the most popular president in the past that we've had, but just the kind of, if you give him that recognition, that's it, thank you.
Trustee Mulaney.
Wow, I, I don't know what to say after all this.
Okay, trustee Katsinas.
Thank you.
Geez, I still have the floor for at least three seconds, I, I got a great, a great topic, the, the water meter replacement program, goes, goes right along with what everybody else was talking about, I know, just as, just, just as exciting, but I appreciate the, that the residents have been very timely with getting these scheduled, so we keep the project going, we've already had a 530 appointment scheduled, so we'll be working in the northeast corner of Orland Park for a while, so we appreciate everybody keeping that project moving, because once it's done, we don't have to worry about it anymore, and I also wanted to let people know about the, the Lucky Egg Hunt on April 1st, which is sponsored by Orland Park Law Enforcement Agency and the Central Credit Union of Illinois, will be out, probably all of the trustees will be out there, and probably the mayor as well, helping the kids hunt for Easter eggs, so we're looking forward to seeing people out there, get that on your calendars, so, thanks, and have a great night.
Trustee Katsinas.
Thank you, our veterans commission is compiling veterans, I'm sorry, not veterans, active service members in need of donations that have been donated to the village for them in the military care packages, so if you know somebody who is active service in the military, there is a form online you can complete and, and drop at the cashier's office right in the village hall, or you could just show up at the village hall and they will have a form for you, in addition to giving out care package to active military, they also actively, all the time seek donations, so, it's a very nice gesture for active military and to give back to the, the gentlemen who serve, and ladies and men who serve, thank you.
Thank you, so to trustee Healy's comments on, on Butch O'Hare, five kills, by the way, is ace, and he was the first ace of World War II, and he did it all in one mission, and it's nice to see that something in Chicago was named after a war hero and not some political blowhard that we have so many of in the city, in, 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 in closing, I want to talk about a couple things, so, we got, had another flurry of robocalls, as we're aware, several members of the board were attacked, they also attacked my family, and we, you know who's behind it, we've told you who's behind it, they're just sick people, what can we tell you? There's, you know, more allegations made there, and then there were some more things that were filed at various state agencies that have been dismissed, trustee Healy and I have had the joy of working on all that, and there was also an anonymous website put up there that was, that mimicked the village, tried to make it look like it was the village, there's also a newsletter out there attacking me, making a bunch of stuff up, so all of this stuff is out there, okay, so the one thing I will tell you, regardless of your position on anything, and against, and any person, when people put political things out and they can't put their name to it, it should tell you all you need to know, okay, put your name to it, if, if you feel proud of what you're saying and you believe in your position, everyone here puts their, puts their name out every day, and we take a position on every single vote, you know who it is, we don't do things anonymously, never have, not even, you know, in, in the political realm, this is our name, this is what's out there, we don't use fake, you know, fake PACs that don't exist, we don't use, do anonymous robocalls, we put our name behind everything that we do, so, when people are doing that, you need to put that in your head, if somebody can't say who they are, you ought to really think twice about whether what they're saying is actually factual or not, okay, with that said, tonight, we obviously did something we said we would do, we waited for everyone to get here, which is, we, the committee, the whole passed an, an ordinance that would, you know, depending on the result of the, of the upcoming referendum, that would, if our form of government was abandoned and we moved back to what we used to be, it would then create a village manager position and, and with all the associated authorities that we would, that we would delegate to them, so that was passed, so that it's ready to go at the next board meeting, and then, lastly, strategic planning, so, and this is more for the board, but also for residents, so it'll be the second meeting in March, we will talk about strategic planning, and, we're going to do it a half an hour early, is that the plan, I think probably 5:30, we'll probably start.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say 5:30, because we may have stuff to talk about, so we'll start our committee the whole a little bit early, I can tell you, I've already had one meeting, and I think we already found some really good things that are going to save us long-term every year on our capital plan, which will give us money for other capital things, so there's a lot of things that can be learned, and I thought it was a really good meeting, Joel, what, an hour and a half, and I think we got a ton accomplished in an hour and a half, so, I encourage the trustees to do that as soon as you can, so then we can start, you know, the next meeting, the plan is, is to look at the SWOT analysis and look at kind of the different alternatives and opportunities that you're looking at, not necessarily analyzing them yet, but at least lay them on the table, and what George and Jim will do is they'll take all of those SWOT analyses that you guys have all worked on and summarize them for that meeting, so that way we're advancing this forward, with that, I hope everyone has a great rest of the month, and I look forward to seeing you in March.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to go into executive session for the, A, approval of minutes, B, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Riordan.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pecov.
Aye.
Executive session?